All right, the January 3rd meeting of the Rockport School Committee is now in session. This meeting is going to be recorded for later broadcast and it's being broadcast live right now. First order of business is the approval of minutes from December 6th, which we were all present at. Does anyone wish to amend or in any other way correct those meetings? No? So do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of December 6th?
So moved.
Second?
Okay. Public comment is the next item, so if there's anything on tonight's agenda that anyone wants to address, now would be the moment from the audience. Not seeing any requests to do so, we'll move to correspondence. We have none at this time. Personnel, we have no personnel matters. Our Student Advisory Committee update rep may have-
They're in multiple places tonight, I believe, so I guess in their absence, I'll just say, you know, we had a nice smooth return to school. Sports teams are cranking. Our middle school theater program was rehearsing today after school when I was over there, and after-school activities are running well. So it seems to be that we all came back ready to go and took a much-needed relaxing break and are hitting the ground running for the second half of the school year, so.
Excellent. Subcommittee reports. So the Policy Subcommittee has been very busy. Tonight, we have Section K, which is a first read, and the team of Amy and Mark have spelled out for us in our drive sort of an overview of the fact that we have a number of categories that all of the policies fall into. And essentially, the only ones with substantive changes that we've reviewed in the past before, there were two of them, but the rest of the policies fall into categories of minor edits to bring them in compliance with MASC best practice policy, areas where our policies are similar but the MASC version is more up-to-date, so we've opted to take the recommendation to update those policies, areas where the content of policy is redundant because it's addressed elsewhere in our manual, or policy which really should belong in our procedures in the district, it doesn't really fall under policy. Is that sort of a fair assessment?
Mm-hmm.
And then, Mark or Amy, was there anything you wanted to comment on in regards to those categories, or anything about the policy review?
Section K was really big-
Yeah.
And it, I think, will get shorter because some of it will be deleted. And it seems like a long time ago, I went back, it was mid-November, that we first talked about these two policies where we wanted some direction. And so now here we are back with the first read of those policies. KFC, which is use of the school campus, remember that one? Used to be use of the playground. That was directed at the elementary playground. Now it addresses the campus in general. And then KHB, advertising in schools. Remember, previously, there was no advertising in schools? And you directed us to go ahead and put together a policy that matches the MASC policy, that allows advertising with the permission of us. And those, I think, are the only really significant changes. Do you think I got that?
Agreed. Yeah, I agree.
Okay. And so this is just a first read. If there were questions, right?
And it's, I guess for context of anybody who's in the audience or watching this, Section K really has to do with the school community's relationship to external-facing entities, so the public, first responders, relations with booster organizations, et cetera. Any questions or comments?
I had a quick question. Maybe this is just sort of a wordsmithing thing, I don't know. It's on policy KFC, it's talking about use of the facilities, and it says that it's restricted to Rockport Public School students and staff on days when school is in session or when district-sponsored programming is occurring. So is that, so on days when school is in session, however, not when it's after-school hours? So is that why the or and or on district?
The or is, yeah, so the or could be that we have a campus-wide event, we have like a field day that's outside of the typical school hours, a jamboree for athletics, something like that, and we want to make sure we have a closed campus, so we don't have people coming onto the property.
But if school is not in session, I guess-
If it's not in session, generally speaking, and there's no, the soccer field's a great example, right? So if there's a soccer game happening, that's an event that's outside of school being in session, so that's still a closed, it's open for the public to come view the soccer game, but it's not here for them to play pickup frisbee, kick balls next to the soccer team.
So it's on days when school is in session during school hours-
Yeah.
Or when district-sponsored programming is occurring?
And again, we have summer ESY programs and stuff, so the in-session has to be liberally interpreted-
Right.
Because that could be three weeks in the summer-
Right.
Where we have so many kids in ESY programming that we need to use the playground or the fields.
So without any other comments or questions, really what we're looking for tonight, this is a cleaned-up first read, so there's, we're looking for a motion to accept the clean version of Section K as a first read.
So I'll make that motion.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so that passes. I don't believe there are any second reads at this time.
No.
Okay, so that would move us on to unfinished business, the North Shore Education Consortium, the capital assessment and tuition updates. So I think at our last meeting, there was a vote pending to decide how to apportion certain costs that had come in.
Yep.
I think, Mark, you're about to give us an update on that.
So Mr. Chair, if it's okay with you, I'll take A and B probably right in order, because they dovetail into each other if that works. So when I first came to you on December 6th, I had told you what was going on with the capital improvement plans and the needs of our consortium, and at the time, I had given you a really broad ballpark of $65,000 to $100,000. The good news is the number's lower, I mean, the bad news is, we did vote to approve it overall, so we are spending money, but the good news is, the impact on Rockport is about $50,000 for a one-time capital assessment as opposed to the $65,000 to $100,000. So I do want to publicly thank my colleagues, the other North Shore superintendents. It was, you know, it's tough when you bring a whole bunch of superintendents together for the good of one organization, yet we all have our own school committees, mayors, and town and city councils to answer to, quite honestly, as well. So it was a heated discussion as far as whether or not this would get supported, and it did get supported. And then it was another discussion around how we're going to assess ourselves, which is a very strange position to put yourself in, when you're figuring out how to assess yourselves as an organization, because everybody is, you know, I'm charged to be territorial and representative of Rockport, but at the same time, I really have to think about the collaborative as a whole, and that puts a lot of us in an interesting spot. So there was a nice agreement to prorate based on size and representation of student body, so our prorated number at that one-time assessment is $50,000. This, this will allow for the potential of up to $75,000 reimbursement through Circuit Breaker, so I'll slow down and talk a little bit about this. If you recall, in our last meeting, I think I said that I had already had preliminary conversations with the town administrator about one-time relief funds, depending how bad this number was. The collaborative has been in communication with DSE, particularly the Department of Special Education at DSE, to talk about how we can get this money covered under Circuit Breaker, even though it's a one-time assessment. So it's going to be billed as a one-time assessment to tuition, and what we're going to do is, we're going to sit down with the special ed team, and we're going to identify which students are already at or above threshold. So if you remember, we don't get 75% on the dollar reimbursement, right, from Circuit Breaker, we get the potential of up to 75%, and if I say anything wrong, just turn that mic on. We get the, we get the potential of up to 75% towards any student that's above that threshold. So, right, that's, just to make sure we're all on the same kind of page with that reimbursement. So because of that, we'll identify the pockets of students that we have who are tuition-based at the consortium, who are already at or above, and we're going to ask them, when they bill us this $50,000 one-time assessment, to apply that to the tuitions on those particular students. And that's sort of the end around. And then as a, right, so then as a result-
It's covered.
It's potentially coverable for up to 75% reimbursement. So that's the good news wrapped into a bill, so to speak. And then, the second number did hold firm, but I don't know that I had real numbers until June put the calculator to the, to the names. So this tuition increase of 14% for our students at the Kevin O'Grady School amounts to $92,992. And the tuition increase of 8% for all the other students from Rockport who are at NEC comes to just over 26.5,000. So that is for a total increase just shy of $170,000. So that's now the real number. So the reason I want to dovetail into the budget conversation is because that changes the budget gap that I had talked about four weeks ago. So when we move ahead to the next slide, I'd originally presented a gap of 631,702. Now, the current gap that we're confident in is 787,96, and that is influenced by the increases from the consortium. It's also increased by some really intense auditing of staffing patterns and salary changes. So I didn't, I do want to give June a lot of credit, she really dug into the numbers and did a lot of work refining them to make sure that we were accurate in our representation. And when she looked at this, we just wanted to make sure, I'm stealing June's language, not my own, that truth in lending that she talks about, making sure the numbers are truly representative of our current staffing patterns and the potential increases of lane-and-step movement and stuff like that. So right now, that is a confident number, 786,096, and if you remember, last year, that was 354 and change, I think. So it's a substantial gap comparatively from last year to this year. So the strategies that you see on the slide, I met with the RTA presidents this morning, so I met with Stacy and Joanne to go over all of this information, to make sure that they had the information prior to the public dissemination. And then I held two volunteer staff meetings today after school, one at the middle high school, and then one at the elementary school, open to all staff, to share the information, because this is what we had done last year, we had always talked about being transparent, making sure, before something was talked about in public, that we were pretty honest with the faculty and staff. So they have not seen the slides, I actually spoke about this, and I had a slide in my hand, so this is the first time the slide's being used in public. So we'll talk through each one of these, and if you ever came as the chair, we'll just stop and have fluid conversations from the board around each one, if you think that's appropriate. So the biggest one, as we all know, 80% of our budget is basically driven by staffing. So the biggest one is that we've identified the ability to reduce the equivalent of 6.0 FTEs in teachers. Between now and our next meeting in two weeks, the intent is to identify, based on seniority, based on licenses, certifications, to identify the exact way this will play out. And the principals and I will meet with impacted staff members, hopefully prior to that Tuesday night meeting, Wednesday night meeting in two weeks, so that nobody, because we'll have positions, if you remember, on the next slide deck. So right now, it's six, the equivalent of six FTEs for 402,351, that's 4.9% of the overall, of the overall salary for that particular bargaining group. Want me to keep going, or?
You guys want to-
I can go through them all, or I could stop at each bullet, however you want me to do it.
Why don't we go through the whole thing, and then we'll come back?
Okay. The next one is a reduction of non-professional staff, this is not RTA staff, that's the only way I can say it at this point in time. So it's the equivalent of $55,000. That could be half a position, one position, multiple positions, so we have and will continue to refine that number and that identification of that particular area, but that's a reduction of $55,000. The next one is a reduction in the anticipated COLA reserve that we have baked into the budget, because unfortunately, if we're riffing people from positions, they won't be here to benefit from the pay raises and the COLA increases. Similarly, the reduction of the early retirement incentive costs, we had baked in five early retirements, and at this point in time, we do not have five, so we have a specific number already. I anticipate probably very soon, knowing where that number's going to settle, so we've already pulled some of that out. If we don't hit five, and we hit one, or we hit two, or we hit three, then these numbers will be adjusted by the next meeting, and finally adjusted by the time the budget book is published in February. The next one down is a partially funded central office admin assistant, will partially fund that salary with grant funding, which helps out our appropriator budget to some extent. The next three or four are just really small adjustments to the budget that we know we can afford to make at this point in time, so we reduce the school and central office supply expenses to almost $10,000, we reduce athletic expenses to $10,000. We're going to fund the anticipated contractual COLA movements at 60%, this is another truth in lending here from June, so instead of the original blush, had 100% baked into it. So, I think you know this, but the teachers have to put in by a certain date in the fall, spring?
Fall.
To let us know if they anticipate moving, based on professional development and graduate credits. And so June dove into like a two, three, four-year historical data point and realizes that over time, even though everybody is complying and puts in, many people put in in the hope that they're going to hit the mark, and they don't. So as a result, the typical year, we usually wind up around 60% of the ask, so we decided we more truthfully budget, instead of putting 100% in, and then looking like we've padded that budget or had to overcut. So we're budgeting at 60%, which is more historically relevant. We've reported on the new light project on the campus, right, so we've done substantial upgrades, June reported on that, I think, last spring, that we went into a partnership with our provider, and we upgraded really nice lighting systems in the buildings, and as a result, we're anticipating the potential for $20,000 in electricity cost savings. Again, that's probably a fluid number, but we're pretty confident there'll be some level of savings based on the light project, and over time, I would suspect we're actually going to see more savings, or minimally some kind of cost avoidance, that will be, that will be documented. And the last one is that we're looking at restructuring the district leadership team or the administration team, and in that restructure, we are able to cut $105,000 in salary, which equals 8.4% of the salary for that particular team. So that's a total of $733,413, leaving us with just over $53,000, which in the big scheme of an $18 million budget and a $787,000 cut is pretty good after two weeks of work on this. So June and I are pretty confident that by the time we get in front of you in two weeks, that 53 will be zeroed out. And we have some moving parts, we have some employees out on leave, and they have contractual rights to let us know by March, we have some other moving parts around staffing. So, you know, we're pretty confident that when we get that number down to zero, after you approve a preliminary budget in February, we'll still be able to refine positioning. And we were fortunate last year, if you remember, we had put a few positions, clerks particularly on the cut list, and we brought those positions back. So anytime we can bring a position back, that clearly is the hope. But when we talk about right-size in the district, and we talk about being responsive to our declining enrollment, what's going to be really important is to understand that these cuts don't put us in a position where we're above the school committee recommended class size at all. They still put us at or below the recommended class size. So I, there's a whole nother slide that goes a little deeper, but if you want, I can stop here, take a breath, and talk about this, or I can move on to the next slide, and then you guys can hit me with them all then.
I know in the past, when we've sort of started the preliminary budget, a lot of times, you sort of presented as, some of the numbers as worst-case scenario, kind of being cautious with the numbers. It seems like as we're getting closer and closer, those numbers are starting to get more refined and closer. Is there any chance, you know, I know some of these maybe with the COLA movements, and maybe some of the, the early retirement, and any other things? Any, is there any chance, or have you looked at what a possible better-case scenario would be, if the numbers kind of work out more in our favor, what, how much that changes it? Or is that even something you haven't even really calculated?
Well, so I think it's important to recognize why we're in the situation that we're in, right? It's really because of the amount of staff in general that we have, and the staff ratio to students. So half of the, half of the gap is created because of that. So I might still be sitting here, even if we had a smaller gap, proposing a reduction enforced, because it's still the fiscally responsible way to keep the school district moving forward and be respectful of the taxpayers' allocation of funds. You know, the low-class size and some of the program offerings, the way they spiral out through the schedule, need to be addressed, and this is the way to do it. The other answer to that is, remember that last year, we were able to make reductions and add programming and move staff, so we, you know, we had value-added, where we eliminated a counseling position, for example, but we gained a behaviorist, because we felt there was a need in the district for the behaviorists. We did the same thing with the Project Lead the Way, with the computer science and the engineering. There is programming and opportunities that we need to move forward. Just in the Boston Globe two days ago, there was a big article about how, sitting on the floor, there's a, there's a big bill to basically make a graduation requirement for all high school students in Massachusetts to take personal finance courses. And as someone with a senior in high school, I wish he had taken a couple personal finance courses, quite honestly, at this point. So, you know, when we know that there's going to be programmatic adjustments, and our charge is to keep our high school as a competitive, fully comprehensive high school, those are tough decisions. So I don't know. What I can tell you, in June, I think we're on the same page with this, I don't foresee the gap getting worse. I think it's tough to say, well, a month ago, it was 631, and it jumped to 787. That, I think, is a tough one to swallow, but it's clearly spelled out why. I don't anticipate coming back to it again in two weeks, now we're just refining this, this number. Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, to comment on the contractual COLA movement, that is pretty, well, the RTA members have the right to turn in those credits all the way till September 30th next year. So it would be a disservice to shrink that number any further than 60%. Some years, yes, it is correct, it's been 40, it's been 50, but it has been 60 in the past, so we want to make sure that that opportunity is fully funded. As far as anyone being able to move down the schedule and their longevity, that is guaranteed-
Right.
And that is built into their salary already, that's already factored in, if someone is moving on the longevity, or from, say, a step seven to eight within their COLA, that is guaranteed money and is already built into the budget, so there's no room for reduction on that at all.
We also have to be cautious about the reserves, we're going to talk about that on the next slide, right? But when we talk about the reserves and maintaining that reserves, and, you know, the public, much as, I don't like to say the word, the public will, will ask, you know, how many years are we going to get out of the override? That's sort of a loosely interpreted question, right? So when we talk about that, and when you get asked that question in public, the answer right now is, as long as possible, but the projection is six to seven years or so, or potentially up to seven or eight years from the start of the override, which was three years ago. And that is provided we're really conservative and responsible with that pocket of money. So even, Mark, even if all of a sudden, we found ourselves in a little bit of a situation where, ooh, you know, maybe we don't need to make reduction X, because the whole Commonwealth has declining enrollment, the percentage of school choice numbers in this district has stayed completely consistent. 25% of our enrollment is still school choice, but 25% of this number is different than 25% of this number. So as a result, when you get $5,000 a student, roughly, for school choice, you're getting less dollars, because your percentage is the same, but you have less children coming in that way. So we do have to be cautious about that. So I would rather, I would rather be conservative, and now that we've built a budget that can potentially not tap into those reserves as heavily as we might have to in subsequent years.
I think it's worth, I'm not really, I'm looking at you, Mark, but just because I like looking at you, your receptive face. I think having been in these presentations for 12 or 13 years, so, we always have a gap of roughly the size, although this one's a pretty large one. The levers that we see here are fairly traditional, there's some new ones, like the new lighting fixtures and their efficiency, which allow us, the one that's really fairly unique over the last two years has to do with staffing, and that's a painful one, because prior to these last two years, and at least my experience over 12 years, there really haven't been those sorts of reductions. We've stood on our heads to make sure that those don't happen, but no entity can really be a fly in amber. In the company I worked at for 25 years, I think we had five major reorganizations that were based and predicated on essentially the consumer demand and what we needed to do to meet it, and I think our school districts, and this is hard to say, I think it's performed superbly for the students in it, but it's also been very different from most other districts, where, you know, both Mark and Amy can attest, staffing fine-tuning occurs every year. So while this is painful, this is not purely a function of, we have a gap and we're throwing people overboard. It's a function really of taking a hard look based on hard evidence and facts from other districts and best practices within the states, and looking at what we can actually afford relative to the override. So I just want to make sure that I get out there, that this isn't predicated on just a budget gap, or just, eh, we don't want to go out and ask for another override too early, which are both true. But primarily, this has to do with, how can we maintain a school district in Rockport that has all the special qualities it has, has some incremental improvements in terms of serving the students, and still be, you know, viable economically? So I just wanted to sort of say that out loud, because having been on the other side of, in the, in the world of non-education, in the outside world, it's still really painful when people are impacted by these reductions, but I don't think we have any choice, and I think the thing that reassures me is the, the metrics that have been used, and the sort of protocol, and the engagement with the administrative staff to help figure this out, which in turn has been informed by what they're hearing on the floor, day after day, with their educators. These are hard decisions that are being made, but they're not made without a great deal of thought and concern, and, you know, in some ways kindness. And I would imagine that, you know, we will probably, in years to come, see, you would hope annually, that you would see kind of a weighing between the needs of the school and the resources we have to meet them, and I think that will continue, because that's a normal thing to have happen. That's not to say that, you know, you'll see dramatic impacts like this every year, but you'll certainly see a degree of change and evolution that we are not used to institutionally here, but is the norm in other school districts. So I don't know, Amy or Mark, if that resonates as true with you from your experience professionally, but that's the read I get after 12 years.
It does resonate with me, coming from a system where, just as you said, staffing follows enrollment, goes up and down from year to year, and this is certainly painful, I think. It will be difficult for people, I'm sure. And I sort of hear you saying, Michael, to a certain extent, this is a little bit, maybe even overdue, after many, many years of not making these adjustments bit by bit by bit. So it takes courage to do this, I think, and, and it's challenging. I'm interested to come to the next slide, because I think on the next slide, we're going to see the offsets include taking money from the reserve to make this work this time, and I think that's important to acknowledge as well.
Else want to comment, otherwise we'll move to that?
So if you look ahead to the next slide, this is that budget page overview that will be fully baked into the book in a couple weeks, and then I put some notes similar to the first meeting, but then I've sort of beefed them up and updated some of the notes. I think, I hesitate to use the word proud when we're talking about this kind of work, but I think we, we need to highlight the first bullet. So when we talk about the fact that this is a 1.75% increase over last year's gross, I challenge the majority of municipal departments across the state to show me a more conservative increase. And just to put that into perspective, last year, we had to cut half of this amount of money, and we still had over 8% growth. So we are under 2%, and we're still going to be able to remain, you know, remain diligent with our class size according to school committee policy, we're still going to be able to move forward with programming for our students, and we're still going to be able to have good teams of teachers in content areas who are highly qualified. So I just don't want to over, we're going to talk a lot about the rest of the bullets, I would suspect, but I don't want to overshadow that first one. That first one is an important one to highlight, that, you know, with a substantial cut, we're really putting ourselves in a pretty fiscally conservative setup for the following school years and the following budgets. You will see the offsets in there to the tune of 2.6 million, that are spelled out pretty clearly in there. June will talk in a minute about the additional reserve contribution in the school- June, we'll talk in a minute about the additional reserve contribution and the school choice and the impact that potentially has that I alluded to earlier. And then the increases and decreases are spelled out in a similar fashion to how they were at our last meeting. You'll notice that the new additions are the consortium tuitions at 14 and 8%, but I believe the rest of those notes are pretty consistent with the past meetings, with the exception of the, the overall increase in, in gross. So June, do you mind just addressing that highlighted area just a little bit?
Sure. On the budget that you saw earlier, the original presentation, we had used as our school choice offset, the number, the hard number that we received last year of, excuse me, I can't read without, 1.58 million. Now, that would be nice to assume that, that we're going to receive that every year, but the reality is declining enrollment across Eastern Mass is a reality. So therefore, we don't know this year's number until after April. There's sped increments involved, programming, people moving in and out. So we had to come up with a number to use. So we used last year's number as an offset, so we didn't have to reduce and rearrange our budget even further than we have. And to do that, I've now done a, as you said, truth in lending, and that the reality is during that NESDEC, was it NESDEC, I can't really remember, did that wonderful research project on enrollment projections. The reality is next year, we should be at 93% of enrollment of last year. So therefore, I am adjusting the school choice number that I'm estimating that we're going to receive by, to 93% of last year's number. That still is a, a guess because we don't know each year what the sped increment for each child is. You could have a high needs school choice child, you could have many children with no needs at all, or the one with high needs has aged out. So that number is in flux. So to maintain last year's number, we will be taking $102,000 out of our reserves and that will prevent us from having to reduce our budget line items by an additional 102,000. So we are stating clearly that we do feel that we'll get, we're hoping for 1.356 million in school choice coming in next year. And then the $100,000, 102,000 will offset and make sure that we are level funding that offset at the same level of 2023 school year.
So I think before anybody wants to comment on that, I think it's important just to kind of hold that in your, in your thought process, that that's $102,000 that we're choosing to propose for you to approve, to use from that source as opposed to more cuts.
Right.
Right? Because we feel like the level of cuts are at a level where we respectfully need to stop right now. And so could we get that 102 in another way theoretically, but for the health of the district and the people involved right now, we think that this is the suggestion that makes the most sense for us.
And that's, June, that's roughly 10% of the total reserves.
Oh, my question is, do we have that, I want to say the ticking time clock, but the number, the number that's in the reserve that we are kind of anticipating?
Well, that's always in flex as well because we're now guessing what we will have all this year and next year. So we're predicting. The number from the fund flow, we're working on the next one as the second quarter just closed. So we'll have an updated number of what is in there at next meeting.
Okay.
Hoping it maintains what we thought at the prior
Right.
fund flow. But even that, as you know, I'm, the glass is half empty in the early part of the year. So even that number is less than what was at the beginning of the year. So we are already using the reserves with additional sped children and different needs and appropriate bringing things back as you deemed appropriate. Well, that's where that money comes from until maybe possibly a grant shows up to offset it or, you know, the electricity or we have a mild winter helps offset that need and can help the reserves be less utilized.
But you feel confident we'll get, that you can do a fund flow report at the next meeting?
Oh, I'm already working on it.
Perfect, okay.
Yeah, we had to wait because the last payroll of the second quarter was literally on the 29th.
I don't mean to catch anybody by surprise, and if this is not an appropriate question, it can wait, but do you, do you remember what the reserve was at the close of the fiscal year? I mean, any number to give us any kind of a
It was 1.8 million around.
That's where we wound up at the end of the last
And at the end of the first quarter, I said we would, we're hoping to end this year at 1.5.
Mm-hmm.
So the problem is, as you use that money this year, you need that money plus.
Sure, but it's not 400
It's shrinking, shrinking, shrinking.
It's not 400 or 500. It's, it's somewhere.
The town of Rockport has agreed with the school committee in the past that there should always be a minimum $400,000 reserve. It just takes one child to move in. And with circuit breaker, you're not seeing the funds to assist that child, new child or a catastrophic event to the schools, physical plant or otherwise. And you don't usually receive those funds for a year or two later. So you do need that reserve. And we do want to, of course, try to achieve the goals that the previous superintendent has set with the override, that it does last that long. And so you have to, it's nice when you see that money, but once you spend it, it's gone and now you have no chance of using those funds in the next few years to make sure that the, an override doesn't happen.
So, June, I think that the point I was trying to fish around to get to is whether it's 1.2, 1.5, 1.8, it is definitely the case that, you know, roughly 10%, 11%, 12% somewhere in there, yes, funds, ebb and flow, get replenished, get taken out, but we're not being hesitant about trying to buffer the impact of the gap by using the reserve. So I, I think what this is presenting to me is a judicious and prudent, there, there are things related to how we provide services that maybe lend themselves to some staffing corrections. There are some corrections that we don't want to make and we're willing to dip into our reserve, but I, I think there's a balance here between these two items. So I just want to make sure that we don't leave presuming that, well, we're trying to avoid an override, so we're just going to hold on to all the money and not spend it.
Definitely not.
I think we're clearly being asked to spend a
It's a balancing act.
Yeah.
It's a balancing act so that you have the opportunity to have programming and staffing to meet all the needs of the students that you have at that time. And as an example for next year, sometimes you do have to dip into that. Will that need again the next year? We'll have to see. It could be more, it could be less.
I just think that, I guess the, the bigger point I'm trying to get at too is that structurally, I think the approach to managing the gap is one that has had the benefit of much more real data from the outside related to best practices than maybe it's had
Yes.
in the past. There's certainly great value in, in experience and making a call about what feels right. But I think what's reassuring to me when you're dealing with real people's lives and reductions in forces is that we're also balancing that against best practices from other districts across the state, or at least current practices.
I have just one other question. Do I read correctly that we'll ask the town contribution to go from 2.5 to 2.7%?
That is correct.
Thank you.
So other questions or comments? It's a work in progress. There'll be more at the next meeting.
Can I, I want to go back to the, that 1.75% increase in the gross budget. As you were saying, that's, that's, seems like a fairly low increase compared to lots of other budgets, right? And I think this is prob, I think your answer to my question will kind of be the answer you gave me to my last question, but I, I, I'm just thinking about that number, that it is a low number. If, if there was a, a little bit higher increase of, say, like 2.5%, which still seems like a very conservative increase, that would allow for a lower gap of, you know, 600,000 or so roughly, if you add a 2% increase. So I guess my question is, how much of that 700, what was it, 733,000?
Yeah.
A lot of that is coming from that, those full-time, those, you know, those FT, the staffing positions.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess I'm, I'm just, and I know it's hard to answer because we, we haven't been presented with, I think you said in the next meeting, we're going to be presented with more. So I know it's kind of hard to answer, but
So 500
Trying to balance that, a, a low increase in the budget while at the same time, kind of a higher increase in the cuts, how much of that is really the, how mu, I guess, how much of that is the, driven by the budget? How much of it is, is driven by student enrollment and really where you think the, the district is at, I guess, is, is my question.
So ju, just to use the real numbers, you're looking at 507,000 and change just in salary, right? When you look at the reduction
Right, yeah.
6.0 teachers, 105,000 administration. So that is a massive chunk of salary.
Right.
Right? I'm not sure I'm interpreting this the same way as you. If we increased the percentage, that means we'd be looking for a larger budget and that means we'd have a bigger gap because we'd have to spend more money. So, yes, that's a small increase comparatively. I'd like to say that that's really because we made some good decisions with grant funding. If you remember, if you look at last year's budget book, you're going to see hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars, particularly of resources, but some staffing paid for with grants, competitive and appropriated. Many of those federal grants, as you all know, are gone, right? Because they're all related to COVID relief and, and other things like that. So the, the amount of money coming into public school districts across the country is, from the, from particular at the federal level, is going to be almost nothing comparatively to the past two or three years. So we, we did a good job as a district leveraging those amounts of monies to make a lot of one-time purchases. That's why the money went up because if you remember all of that grant money was in that, the proposed budget from last year. So I don't want people to interpret 1.75 as, hey, we tried to, we purposefully tried to stay under a number. Interestingly enough, we actually didn't. That was the last number we
I guess that was, yeah, that's a better way to phrase the question.
Yeah, we, that was not a target goal. There was no, we didn't say, geez, we want to be at 3% or we want to be at 2. We wanted to right-size the district, be fiscally responsible, adjust staffing accordingly and still be able to meet with vendors and teachers around programming. As it is, the Science Department, 6 to 12, has been sitting, waiting for us to say, we're ready to put them into a curriculum review cycle. And we have been unable to move the Science Department, 6 to 12, into a curriculum review cycle. We have to do it next year.
Okay. Yeah, that would have been a better way for me to phrase the que, that was exactly, that's the point.
That makes sense. Yeah, that wasn't out the target.
Okay.
I want to see if I understand this chart as well. If, if we put $100,000 in salaries back in the top part of this chart, the percent increase would go up from 1.75% to something else. And then we would have to find that same dollar amount
Something else.
in the offsets or all the way down at the bottom in budget reductions needed. So, am I understanding that correctly? Thank you.
Thoughts, other questions or comments?
So in two weeks, just for Amy who wasn't here and for the rest of us who might have, you know, foggy brain, what'll happen is I will give you snapshots of the draft budget book, right? So you'll have snapshots embedded in the slides that'll spell out all of the moves a little more clearly with positional descriptions and, and some of the narrative. And then that will flow into the final development of the budget book. So we have, you know, some deeper work in two weeks and then the final deep work on February 7.
I have just one more question for the benefit of staff members who might not have been able to be in your stand-up meetings. Will this information go out to people in writing or will they have an over their chance if they didn't get to hear it when they see this to ask questions?
Yeah, so I asked the principals the same thing. So I, I'd be happy to just hold more meetings or come out to team, grade level team meetings or anything, however people want to do that work. And this slide deck gets posted on the website as early as tomorrow by Amanda. So all of this information is always going to be public.
Thank you. Yep. Are there no other questions or comments for moving on to donations, number two?
So again, we just, we continue to be thankful and in awe of the community's sense of giving and philanthropy. So a big thank you to Cape Town Savings Bank for donating $1,500 to the Athletic Department Holiday Basketball Tournament and the Nacella family, who I know does not necessarily like to be thanked publicly, but, you know, we already know that they helped us out quite a bit with the field, the athletic field improvements in the back, and they came through with $1,500 to the music department at our concert the other night. So a big thank you to Cape Town Savings Bank for their ongoing support and to the Nacella family. You know, I've been in six school districts in 30 years. I've never seen anything like it. I've never seen anything like it. So when we talk about community support and being respectful of the community, it's a two-way street. So I, I say thank you, wholeheartedly to the community.
Yeah, that's amazing. If you've, I guess we're looking for an approval as well as a review of the
We are. So I'll give you the context. So as you know, we moved from Dean of Students to Assistant Principals this year, which has been a, a really nice change from an administrative standpoint. However, the Dean of Students is still a union position and it's still in the contract. And so as I look at job descriptions, we had to rewrite the job description because they had language in the original one that was more based like a, like a licensed administrator. And now that position is, is filled by the Assistant Principals. So this is basically the, the new version, which makes it more like a traditional Dean of Students in charge of student management and operations and day-to-day work with kids and teachers. There is potential, as I had said when we made the move to Assistant Principals, that the high school, middle school principal will want to entertain the possibility of bringing the dean position back to some level or some extent in, at any point in the future based on the needs of kids or adults. So I wanted to make sure we had a, a job description that made sense and was not redundant in its ask related to Assistant Principals. So I'm just looking for questions, if you have any, and then a, an approval tonight so I can have that set in the event that Principal Rose has a need to talk about this position.
So just a one basic, can you outline how it is right now, principal versus assistant principal? How many, what schools, and then where the dean would fit in?
So at the elementary school, we have one principal full-time, one assistant principal full-time. And at the new high school, middle school configuration, we have one principal with two assistant principals. And we do not have the dean position filled. If we find a need to fill it at any level, that person would be more in charge of overseeing daily operations of student management, hallways, bathrooms, lunches, non-educational time. They'd be the first line of defense if there's an issue going on in a classroom where that needs to be addressed because our Assistant Principals are functioning as, you know, instructional leaders. They're doing classroom observations. They could be chairing 504 meetings. So they're not always readily available on a, on a, on a dime. And this would, this would be potentially that first buffer of support. And arguably, it could be a, a necessary conversation at some point.
Other questions? Right, so do I have a motion to approve the updated middle high school Dean of Students job description?
No.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's no finance update as of this time.
I, Mr. Chair, I wonder if we want to go back and actually make a motion to accept those gifts. We appreciated them, but we've
Thank you.
we skipped over that.
You're absolutely right. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to accept the two gifts as
I'll make that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Amy. School committee discussion, are there any walk-on items that anyone wishes to bring up? No? Is there a need for an executive session?
There is not.
Well, my gosh. Okay, so do I have a move to adjourn the school committees?
No.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very well.